Good evening. I'm Willa Powell, Chair of the Policy Committee of the Rochester Board of Education. If there's anyone watching now, I want to thank you for your patience. We've had some technical difficulties setting up in an alternate location while our board meeting room is being renovated. And it's taken us quite a while to get all of the equipment connected and working. So again, I thank you for your patience, and we're about to begin. Most of us have our board docs open on our laptops, and in addition to that, we all have paper copies of the agenda and all of the policies under discussion tonight. The agenda begins with Item three is standing agenda items. We have minutes to approve for June 6th. Do I have a motion? None opposed.
For June 2023. In total, there were recommended updates to four policies. Forty-eight twenty-one, school ceremonies and observances. Fifty forty, student religious theme really of all the updates. First, these are not required policies, and the district actually does not have policies that match up exactly with these policy numbers. These are just recommended updates. You know, my assumption is we're seeing this based on some of the activity of the Supreme Court and some of their recent rulings. The district does have several policies that address a lot of the same or very similar issues. I'll just give a quick run-through of those. Fifty-two ten, student organization and programs. Fifty-two twenty, student publication. Excellence, zero one one five, student harassment and bullying prevention and intervention policy. The zero one hundred policy, which is the district policy prohibiting discrimination or harassment of students or employees, and policy ninety-one ten, equal employment opportunity. And so because we don't have one-to-one policies, but again, we have a lot of the similar information kind of dispersed among several of our own policies, you know, my recommendation is to really kind of review the recommendations and start a process of, you know, kind of seeing if there are certain pieces within the recommendations. I don't recommend adopting those policies wholesale. I think what we want to do is kind of glean and see if there are particular aspects that might be useful to add to, you know, our current policies.
About it, these policies, the, what the, what NISBA has recommended, did we get those particular policies to review?
Yes. Them individually to commissioners as per part.
Yeah, because I'd like to look to see these policies have to say. Thank you.
This policy manual review. So tonight, we're going to look at multiple policies. As always, we follow the policy roadmap, and so all these policies have been as outlined in policy twenty-four ten. And so the first policy is sexual harassment, zero one one zero. There were no significant changes. NISBA has recommendations was that this policy has been updated. The policy has been split into three separate policies. the bullets for more clarity. NISBA said that this policy was okay. Visitors to schools, twelve forty. The document for this policy was updated throughout the document to align with the district practices. NISBA said that the policy was okay. School-based planning. NISBA said that this policy was also okay. Grievances, ninety-one forty point one. No significant changes. This is a new policy, and so basically, the recommendation is just to adopt NISBA's sample as-is. Staff substance abuse, ninety-six ten. Is to rescind this policy. NISBA has said that this policy can be removed as it offers little meaningful policy guidance. This document is good information, but would be better suited for an employee handbook. Also verify it does not violate any collective bargaining agreement. And so basically, when subcommittee reviewed this policy, the information in this policy, it is in our current staff handbook. And then finally, professional learning and staff development, ninety-seven hundred. This is another new policy, and it's also being recommended for adoption based on NISBA's sample.
Thank you, Charisma. And so now, we're going to just move through them one at a time, give everyone opportunity to weigh in, and hopefully, we'll be able to advance this full packet to the board by the end of tonight. First is the sexual harassment policy, zero one one zero. You heard the recommendation was to keep, keep our version as opposed to NISBA's recommendation to split it into three separate policies?
So Commissioner Powell, why did we make that decision to keep ours as opposed to the recommendation by NISBA?
I think it's mostly about familiarity, but if Adrian wants to speak to that?
Sure. Yep. I was in favor of keeping our policy as opposed to breaking it up. The district has a lot of policies, right, which I think are good. It makes, you know, guidance easy to find for, you know, employees and students. You know, with that said, breaking up, I think, what we have, which is a pretty familiar policy to most employees into three new documents, I didn't, I didn't believe added value. Again, yeah, I just, I just didn't think it added value. I think we covered pretty much what we need to in not only zero one hundred, but other policies, and creating, you know, really three new policies, you know, wasn't going to necessarily serve the interests of the district.
Okay. Yeah, I was sort of thinking that they were talking about separate sections within one policy, but what were the three policies that they wanted us to separate it into?
If I recall, it was
I didn't read their policies. I just looked at ours, so I apologize for that.
I think it was employees, students, and
Intro.
If you're able to look at the PowerPoint presentation again, President Elliott, you'll see them listed.
Okay.
We have another, okay. Any other questions? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to advance this to the full board?
Motion.
That was Commissioner Simmons. Moved and seconded by President Elliott. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The next policy, public engagement, eleven forty. This is essentially unchanged, virtually unchanged. So the previous policy referred to elements of the strategic plan that are gone by the wayside, the five design tasks. So we've updated that language just to refer to the strategic plan in the most generic Any comments or questions about this policy?
Yeah, I just have more of a comment. Can you hear me okay?
Can you speak right into the microphone?
I think it's on. Can you hear me okay? Okay. No, I have more of a comment, and I like the addition of making sure it's clear around students, families, teachers, and so on, when we're speaking about community. I think that we have, like Adrian said, we have a lot of great policies. I think I'm starting to focus in on how we're operationalizing those policies, so I just wanted to bring that out. The language is great, but how are we operationalizing that? That's all.
Well said. Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to, I have a motion from Commissioner Patterson.
Second.
Seconded by President Elliott. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, carries unanimously. Next policy that we'll discuss is visitors to schools, twelve forty. We have added, well, we've more or less rearranged some of the language. Made it a little more permissive so that there's room for emergency basis visits and that sort of thing. Any questions?
Commissioner Powell, I'm looking, well, at some point, although I'm hoping that this is not the case, I think at some point, you know, how our parents come into schools, and I don't know if this may be even language that may be within the, if there's a safety, if we have a safety policy, but, you know, how, you know, some of our parents are coming into the schools and other visitors, we may have to look at at some point amending this policy. So just wanted to put that on the table at this point. Thank you.
Adrian, do you want to respond to that?
Yep. So absolutely. So these policies all go through the subcommittee, you know, members of, you know, the cabinet of the community, you know, administration have an opportunity to offer input on issues that come up and how they'd like them best addressed. We also have other policies that kind of address what you're talking about. For example, the code of conduct. The code of conduct extends not only to students, but to parents and to employees. And so you're absolutely right that, you know, parents and families have a duty to, you know, behave in a certain manner, to conduct themselves, as do we all when we're on, we're on school grounds. So you will see, I mean, a familiar theme is many things are, some things are covered in multiple policies in kind of varying ways.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Do I have a motion to advance this?
So moved.
Second.
I think that was Commissioner Malloy, seconded by President Elliott. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, carries unanimously. Thank you. The next policy is, I'm going to catch up with it. School-based planning team. This had previously been housed in the board section of the book primarily because it was, I think, presumed to be like a board authorized committee, at least at the steering committee level. It's not clear whether that's where people would look. It makes more sense to put it at the district level, hence the change in policy number to twelve-ten. Very few changes, largely rearranging the words that are already there, except on the bottom of page two, there's a new sentence. And on page three, in bullet number two, there's new language. Any questions, concerns? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to advance this out of committee?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Malloy, seconded by Commissioner Simmons. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, carries unanimously. Thank you. The next policy, if I can read the screen correctly, is field trips and excursions policy. I managed to bring up the clean copy. Give me a second. Yeah, there's quite a bit of new language here under the heading of transportation in Particularly, we wanted to make sure that we didn't have parents coming to pick up their kids without letting anybody know, picking up other people's kids at the end of an event, and really locking that down so that we are not exposed to any legal liability or our children exposed to going, going missing.
So Commissioner Powell?
Yes, ma'am.
So with the
Can you put the microphone closer?
With the removal of the language in order to make, that's in the second paragraph, what replaces that? Where's the authority in this, in this policy?
Okay, so that sentence would basically be replaced by the addition of that entire subsection on transportation.
Yeah, okay.
So it's greatly expanded.
But it does not, if I'm, maybe I'm not reading it correctly. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I just, I want to make sure that given the conversations that have been happening, that we actually add a subsection around parents as chaperones and chaperones who are not connected to the school. And that, I think, is a bigger liability and issue, and making sure through policy, not just through direction of the superintendent to principals to them remember, because then we have it in writing, and it's clear to everybody what the policy is, around parents, guardians who attend field trips, only sticking with their child, and some additional securities around ensuring that they're cleared through different systems, and that they're cleared and safe to be around other children, even if they have a current student in the district, but maybe on the registry. That is not someone appropriate to go on a field trip. And I do think we need to spell it out through the policy, what that looks like for field trips, not just visiting or in the classrooms, because that's another angle that adults who are not always connected day-to-day with our kids have access to our kids. Thanks.
Mr. Superintendent, you want to feel that or direct it to someone else?
So I do believe, we did have that in the regulations. I'm not opposed to including some language around chaperones being, or volunteers being cleared, because I do think that is, that is an ultimate concern. So I, if we can take a look at that language to see just specifically, everything else could be covered in regulations, but specific to who could chaperone, that they're either an approved volunteer or a district employee. Right. That's what I would
Is that covered in any other policy, like our volunteers? Our volunteers, anything else? I mean, this does sound like a really important point.
Yeah, we do have volunteers in the classrooms that you have to go through a policy, you have to go through an approval process. But this is, you know, what my worry, and this is what Vice President Lebron just said, I'm having a field trip tomorrow, I need an extra chaperone, let me reach out to my parents and give them some kids to supervise, is something that is probably not the best practice for us to have, that the volunteers are covered as well, that we're saying that they've gone through an approval process or they're a district employee. There is some ramifications to that, but I think it's the right safety thing to do.
Right. We do have a volunteer procedure, if I recall, and Charisma can jog my memory. We are in the process of looking at a formal volunteer policy, right? I think we're currently working on that in the subcommittee right now, but there have been some kind of longstanding procedural things in terms of like cursory kind of background checks and things that are run, you know, by the district with volunteers.
Yeah, but I just want to, I just want to respond. So I just want to say, you know, I've been a parent for a long time, but yeah, so if you want to volunteer your child's school, our, our district will do the background check to clear individuals to be in the building and work in classrooms. There is no clearance for field trips. I can tell you for the last 20 years, if one of my child's teacher needs a chaperone, Dr. Peluso is right, they will call parents and say, hey, we lost one of our volunteers, can you come and chaperone? Now granted, yes, those are based on relationships, but we really should be doing background checks and clearing individuals. I think the way that, and I don't want to make it more difficult for staff and teachers, and just hear me out, y'all, there's been a number of issues across the entire country around these things. You never know what people's backgrounds are until you clear it, and even then, that's not 100% guaranteed. There's, there's been lots of incidents where people are cleared to be around children, and then unfortunately, do something to hurt children. So I just want to put that out, that that doesn't give us 100%, but I think it gives us a better percentage of not having something in the policy separate from volunteering in the classroom, because this is specifically talking around field trips, excursions, especially overnight trips, that our students do have the opportunity to take and often travel even out of state with their school, and sometimes additional chaperones because they're a parent of a student. So thank you for supporting that. I just want to tell staff that I think one way that it becomes more manageable as we're implementing it is that early in the school year, you start identifying some of the parents who have stepped up to be your classroom supports and field trips. Usually, those can be identified within the first month or two of school starting, and then work within the district's volunteer department to get them cleared, so that you do the legwork of clearing them in advance before school trips pop up. But I do think the notion of calling somebody in a day, even five days, without doing a background check to accompany on a field trip puts us and children in a peculiar situation.
Commissioner Powell, if I can, just not to belabor that point, because I, thank you, Vice President Lebron. I also just wanted to add to that discussion in regard to preparation for these actual trips, so maybe some backgrounds or what have you should happen, but I'm aware of trips, especially again, overnights, things of that nature, where parents were to be prepped, and things that I've heard that it was not necessarily the best preparation. So just again, that operationalizing and making sure that our parents that are going to do the more concrete visits with children are trained, or they know what to expect, and it's not a five-minute Zoom call, okay, you're all set. Thank you.
So the superintendent, I've already whispered a conference here and agreed that those are extremely valid points. We still have two ways that we can move forward. One way is we can hold this back and send it back to the administration to, to add language that currently exists in procedure. And since the two people that care most about this, I want to make sure they understand the options. One option is to not move it out of committee, send it back to the administration to clean up. The other option is that we move this version forward with a commitment that it be immediately reviewed again for, because what you're talking about is basically add-on language. So the advantage of passing what we have is we've got that better transportation language in place, and we can have it in place by September. That's not, that's not the only consideration. We can also just hold the policy back in committee and wait until the administration has brought that procedural language into the policy. So I leave it to the two who have both verbalized their concerns. Which direction would you like us to go forward?
I'm amendable to the, to moving it forward with the clause or what have you, that we are going to just take a look and make those changes as soon as possible.
Commissioner Lebron, can you?
I actually would prefer that we hold it back and then get it on the board business meeting to pass it so that it's effective starting in September. I don't want to move it forward and then it falls through the cracks and here we go, school has started and then we have a new policy or the language is not there or hasn't been amended or people are looking at a new policy, that then they have to go back and then review again and have an understanding. So for me personally, I would prefer that if we're going to do it, we do it right the first time and then keep it moving. And as things come up later, a year from now, if it needs to be revamped again, then do that.
So the question from me would be, how soon would we be able to take a look at that so that we can move it forward?
Well, presuming that there's already procedural language that we can lean on, I think we'd have to go back to subcommittee and back into cabinet. So it could be about a month delay, because the subcommittee meets twice between regular policy meetings.
So I'm willing to support the will of the board at this point.
Just want to understand why we'd have to go to an entire subcommittee? We just had the conversation here. The administration can update language added and have the policy added to any of the committee meetings that we have on Tuesdays coming up, and we still have a board business meeting for this month coming up as well. And I would also stress that this would be a priority, because when school starts, field trips and excursions are going to start right up shortly after. There's not going to be a long wait time of school starting and field trips starting.
And so you've just articulated the argument, why would you pass it now? So that it would be in place September, October?
But the issue becomes, you're going to have staff coming in to learn a policy that then you're going to change in four weeks, and that is not realistic. Our staff are not reading these policies like that. And then falls on the administration and principals who are juggling a million things. My argument is just that if we do it once, we do it right, and then we have it in place before school starts. And this should be a priority, especially given all of the conversations happening all across the world around children's safety by adults outside of schools that are not cleared typically. Just want to put that out there.
Mr. Superintendent, you want to respond?
Like I said, I truly agree. We, we do have some mechanisms with like Raptor and some other things, but I want to make sure that this is concrete somewhere so that people know what they have to do in order to be approved to be on a field trip. So I could bring, I could get it to subcommittee and get some draft language done as quickly as possible, and then we bring it forth at the next meeting.
Okay, so in order to facilitate that outcome of leaving it in committee, the best path forward would be, I will call for a motion. If we do not get a motion or we do not get a second, it stays in committee. Everybody understand? Yeah, I said, in order to facilitate the process of keeping it in committee for the superintendent to continue work. Our agenda has us, you know, putting a motion on the table. I'm going to call for the motion. If I don't get a motion or I don't get a second, it stays in committee. Understood? Okay, so.
Commissioner Powell, sorry, before you do the motion, do you mind if I ask a question? Because I know Vice President Lebron mentioned the want to have this policy in place by September, and I know Superintendent Peluso just responded. So based off of his response, I just want to make sure where we at, where we stand with stuff. Are you still looking for an actual policy to be in place by September? Are you okay with, with Dr. Peluso's-
Let me just say this, charisma. We can put a policy in place by September. There are three more committee meetings and one board business meeting before school starts. There's going to be a committee meeting the day before school starts that gives us five opportunities to write one small paragraph around chaperones on the bus and what that looks like. But I'm just thinking realistically to throw one policy out there and then four weeks after school starts, throw a new policy in place, because that's essentially what it would be to staff. They're not looking as like, oh, it's an amendment. It's going to be a whole new policy procedure. And procedurally, they should be coming from day one, understanding what that looks like. So yes, my expectation is that this policy is, that one paragraph is drafted and put in there. It doesn't even need to be more than four sentences is in there and ready to go for the start of the school year and that staff get a notice that, hey, we have this new language added and some updates to this particular policy, because staff have been doing what they have typically done for years and years and years. And I do think it is going to be a little bit of an impact in that language change. But it's, it's going to be important to keep kids safe from adults who are not typically around kids day-to-day and are not in this system, working in the system day-to-day. Thanks.
Okay, so, Claire's mug, right? Okay, so I'm going to call for a motion to advance this out of the board, out of the policy committee. Do I have a motion? I do not have a motion. So we're going to move on to the next policy. And you'll see this one again, so, okay? The next policy is policy 9,000, personnel goals. As you know, it's been my objective to have the one, the thousandth level policies for every section of our manual. We did not have one for the 9,000 series. And this is what is being proposed based on strategic plan and the board goals. And although you do see changes, those are changes from the original draft. We don't, we haven't had a policy on this before, right? So even though you see red and blue, it's, it's all new. Any observations or questions? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to move this?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Lebron, seconded by Commissioner Malloy. Any other concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. That takes us to policy 9140 dot one, staff complaints and grievances. Okay. This would be new. The red inserted is a modification to the NISBA recommended policy and this would make it explicit to our, our district. Any questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to advance this.
Motion.
Was that Commissioner Simmons? It was? Okay. Moved by Commissioner Simmons, seconded by Commissioner Malloy. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, homestretch, folks. Now we're on policy 9610, substance abuse, staff, I'm sorry, staff substance abuse specifically. Very, very minor changes here. Any questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to advance this out of committee. Moved by Commissioner Patterson.
Second.
Seconded by President Elliott. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimous. Okay. And the last, I think it's the last one. 9700, professional learning and staff development. This is being recommended by NISBA and really there are no changes being offered up by the administration.
Make a motion.
Moved by President Elliott.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Patterson. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then here, many ayes. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. That just got us through all of new business. We have one piece of unfinished business. Some time ago, we offered up a policy 0101, gender neutral bathroom. It was brought back into committee at the board's request. And this is, this is where we're at. This is a NISBA recommended policy. Any questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to, I have a motion from Commissioner Patterson.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Malloy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Any opposed? Hearing no opposition, carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay. That brings us to the end of the policy committee meeting. We do have our survey and I do believe we have an executive session following this meeting. So if you'll take a moment to fill out the survey.
Can I make a point of personal privilege?
I'm sorry?
Point of personal privilege. I just wanted to say thank you to Commissioner Powell for all the work that you continue to do on policy. This is very tedious work.
It's a shame nobody could hear that.
Are we, are we, are we no longer in session? Okay.
I know, I know, I know. This is getting old, this is getting old, guys.
So you didn't hear it. We do appreciate what you do, Commissioner Powell. Do we need a motion then to close?
I do need a motion to adjourn into exec-
Executive-
Is the executive session is going to be run by President Elliott. So I'm going to ask for an adjournment and then turn the floor over to-
Commissioner Powell, we need, if you don't mind, we need the policy to stay open so we can go into executive session from the actual meeting.
Okay, all right. Oh, otherwise it's a special meeting, right?
Yes.
Okay. So instead of a motion to adjourn, I'm going to ask for a motion to go into an executive session. General counsel, can you give us the language? We're going into executive-
Right, to discuss personal, you're right, to discuss a personal matter leading to the-
Number seven.
Motion, demotion.
They are so good with doing that.
Right. So do I have a motion to recess into executive session to discuss?
Still moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you.